By God.
I think, again, I don't know.
The meeting's gonna come to order. Geez, I guess I heard it out there. Oh, Jason was here, so he didn't. Was he here? I didn't see him. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It is now seven forty. I know, I'm still missing. They're not going too far. All right, you guys, where'd you go? Think if I go over begging them, they'll be like, "Oh."
I thought they banged, they were gonna get back.
They then come. We have to be called to dinner, so the meeting's gonna start. And we're still missing one. Did you guys happen to see Sherry? Okay, there she is, all right. Now we'll do a roll call.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Here. Ms. Butler-Chandler?
Here, Mr. Wisswasser?
Here.
Mr. Fuenz-Bless?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Mr. Bensy's absent this evening.
Okay, we have the call. For those who have an agenda, we have civil reflections, number two. It'll be the Pledge of Allegiance, and then after that, I'll move on.
I listen to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, item number three is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Ayes.
We'll have discussion. Because I wanted to amend the agenda. I was waiting. Okay. What I got is B-A. And that would be on page two. Under items introduction.
B-A.
Okay, that would be on page two. B-A. Okay.
I don't see a B-A.
That's what I'm looking for, make sure I've got my... Nope, it's thirteen. It's thirteen. It would be under thirteen A. I'd like to have that removed. Yep. That one has the petition to abandon, to remove it, under item self of action. Thirteen B-A, thank you. And I also wanted to add...
Marie, could I ask a question before you go on?
Oh, go ahead.
Can you talk a little bit about why you want to take it off?
Yes, I don't think we're ready to do that from the standpoint that we do not have, that hasn't even been filed yet, so...
But they're waiting for us to sign on in order to file it. They're waiting for us to file it.
And I'm thinking, after listening to all of his statements, which was a wonderful engagement for people, to be able to make that determination, I think you're just gonna need to have to do some more thinking on it and talking.
All right. I don't need more thinking, to be clear, so I'm gonna be a no on that.
I understand, I understand completely. That's all that I'm saying, so I'd like to have that removed, but I'd also like to add your thirteen A, which is introductions and discussion, for B, which is your park and recreation five-year plan. Apparently for our Mrs. Taylor.
Yeah, that was removed because the people from Williams &amp; Works will be here on the sixth. They were not able to come today.
Okay, that's... That's all that needed to be understood with that. So we have until, if they can't come today, they'll be here February 6th. Got it. Okay. So that was my only questions that I had, because on the seventeenth, we didn't have anything that was going to be listing for that five-year plan. So thank you, that's appreciated. Okay. So now we can take our vote for approval of the agenda. What's as amended?
No.
Right, hasn't changed to a motion.
Or he did change it to a vote? Or you, is that a motion?
I made a motion to approve it as it's presented.
Steve, second.
Mr. Fuenz-Bless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
No.
Mr. Wisswasser?
You have a spot.
Ah, I'm gonna say yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
No.
Okay, so that's approved. So item four, which is disclosure of conflict of interest. I'm hearing none.
Oh, George.
Public statements.
Good evening, Judy Gardi, chairperson of the Senior Services Advisory Board. I brought with me this evening Doak Bless. I'd like to just introduce you to him and have him come up and just say a few words about the value of having a community conversation. Thank you.
Hi. Nice to meet you. Um, I, uh, this is the dialogue process that... Yes, I know. I'll be very, very brief. Uh, the dialogue process that we'll be doing tomorrow and Thursday night is one that, it's based on a process that we've used in Lansing. I worked for the New York County Health Department for seventeen years. I probably did this process maybe eighty times in the course of that, on a variety of topics, but a community dialogue, bringing people together. The key features of it are individuals have their voice entered into the dialogue early on, and then everybody gets its voice. It's organized in a way that mirrors the way people make good decisions individually, by moving through questions through a specific sequence. And finally, the nice thing about it is that it allows new ideas to emerge in the course of the dialogue, and creates ownership by the group in it. And if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer the process. But I'm really looking forward to it. It's a fun process, I hope a lot of people show up.
Good. Thank you. Is there anyone else, public statements? George?
George Baker, State Road. I just wanna thank those that have went through all this public debate. Thank you guys for your time and all you do for our township.
Okay, thank you, George. Is there anybody else?
I just also wanted to thank all of you for your time and patience on this and getting educated. We really appreciate this. We certainly ask for your support in the abandonment of the roadway at the end of Webster Road. But in any case, the time and effort that's been put in is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Is there anybody else? All right. Items for the county, state, federal, or other agencies. Commissioner Washington?
Dwight Washington, 4600 Clark Road, county commissioner. And I did report last week, or two weeks ago, about what the... Oh, the start of the new year and the changes that have been made. So I'm gonna not really address that, but loosely just say that the Parks and Green Space Commission for the county is in the process of getting their five-year plan up and running too. And so that is something that I think is really relevant to Bath Township as you're being addressed with a new Parks, five-year plans for our Parks and Green Space. And I just wanna say that it does make the county stronger when the different municipalities do have Parks and Green, or five-year plans, and we'll hope that you'll consider them. And I think that one of the things that's being offered in the, um, uh, business that was selected by the Parks and Greens, or Parks and Recreation Committee, was one that really uses a lot of community dialogue. And I think that community dialogue and having a five-year plan will allow us to have civil discussions and efficient discussions and where we don't have to have special meetings as, and like we did today. But it was great to see the dialogue and different opinions and people coming together and, you know, being able to laugh and joke with one another. And that was community building and, uh, you know, it does make one feel proud to be in Bath, that we can have those civil discussions. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, item seven. So there isn't anybody else. I don't see either state, federal. There's a lone wolf, so there he is. Number seven, consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz-Bless?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item eight, which is the approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting of January 3rd.
Move approval of the minutes from January 3rd as presented.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz-Bless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
All right, we have the approval of the vouchers. Item nine for 2022 and 2023.
So who's the vouchers for 2022 and 2023?
Second.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fuenz-Bless?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes.
All right, item ten, treasurer's report.
I have nothing to report tonight due to the fact that I'm really running a little late here.
Gee, really? Okay. All right, item eleven, committee appointments. Um, there doesn't seem to be any. I'll save my comments. Okay. Township committee report. Don't sit down.
Again, good evening, Judy Gardi. Just a reminder that we are having these conversations this week. Hopefully you got these in your mailboxes and could pass them out to your friends and neighbors. Um, the first one is tomorrow at one o'clock at the Senior Center, and the second one is Thursday at six o'clock at the Senior Center. And then there will be a validation session on Sept- oh, September, on Saturday, January 28th at 10:30 in the morning. So I hope that I'll see you each of you either on Thursday, Wednesday, or Thursday. Thank you very much.
All right, item thirteen, we have unfinished business. A, introduction and discussion. Miles go up, there you are. We're gonna talk about, uh, the updates.
All right. So, uh, as we talked about last time, uh, the fee schedule for development in the township hasn't been updated since about 2005, according to our records. So I thought it was probably time to look at the fee schedule and possibly make some updates pending, you know, the board's approval, of course. So how the planning department went about this, you'll see on the fee schedule, including your packet next to the dollar amount, there's some text in bold and green. So that's showing what this dollar amount to the left is increased by from what it currently is. So for example, the first fee on there is rezoning, application fee, first acre. It currently says $500. That's a $200 increase, so previously it was $300. So not to overcomplicate, but just trying to get everybody on the same page. These, the way, or the method, I guess, these numbers were determined was we looked at all of the fee schedules from our neighboring municipalities and Clinton County, as well as Clinton County, looked at how much they were charging for similar services. We were on the far rowing of those, likely because we haven't updated our fees since 2005. Even with these fee increases, we still remain highly competitive in this space. I think it's also worth saying that these fee increases on the fee schedule, in case anybody in the public here isn't aware, anyone on the board isn't aware, are primarily targeted towards commercial development. Right now, our, the fees we currently take in to review and bring commercial projects to the planning commission and the board don't, by no means do not cover the township's costs. So in a form, developments review is being subsidized by the taxpayer. This is trying to subsidize those less and have more of a direct cost to the developer. So are there any questions about the schedule?
If you had a question, I have a question. Go ahead.
Yeah, on the last page.
Yep.
I know it's... Says approved by township board and it says twenty. What does that mean?
Oh, that's just to fill in the date there, so you just put day, month, and then twenty.
You couldn't put fill in the date, you had to put twenty.
Yep, yeah, just less work. I don't know, that's how the form was before. That's how the form stayed.
It's the millennium.
All right. My question...
Sorry for the confusion.
Even though this has not been done since '07, is what you said?
'05, yeah.
'05. It seems like a really big jump. For example, you have to have $1,500 in escrow, or an application fee is increased by $200.
So the current, the current escrow we take in is starting off at $1,000 to a max of $3,000. This would make the first payment we take in $1,500 to a max of $3,500. The reason for the $500 jump there in the escrow fees is actually with the rising costs, not only our review costs, but like, let's say, our engineering firm, legal review, we're usually exhausting that $1,000 in the first round of review, causing the staff to then request a second escrow. The deputy treasurer has to send out our check request to the applicant. We have to process that, we have to refund the account. This would hopefully create less work for township staff and for the applicant.
So you request your escrow to be a dollar amount, and then you refund it?
So how the escrows work is once the occupancy has been issued to the applicant for whatever development, whatever dollar amount is remaining in that escrow is on an annual basis returned to the applicants at the conclusion of the development process.
So you dip into the escrow for...
To cover our professional fees of...
So this is a revenue? This is really a revenue?
No.
No.
No. It's not a revenue, it's a liability account.
Thank you, Steve.
A liability account.
It's a trust and agency account, it's a liability account. It doesn't touch the general fund, the bills from the engineering services, or maybe SCOMA, possibly anybody else that would be affected, uh, affected by, not infected, affected by the development. Um, they, they actually take and have money they put down, and their engineering bills are paid by themselves, they're not paid by the taxpayers.
Well, no, I get that.
Excuse me.
Yes. Yes, public notices as well.
Okay, no, I'm sorry. Public notice, meaning what we put in paper?
So if a development is permitted by special use permits require that it's noticed publicly.
Okay. Nope, yeah. It always helps when you understand the process.
No, for sure.
Thank you.
Marie?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have an estimate? Can you come up with an estimate of how much revenue this would bring into the township? Like, what's gonna be the difference?
Yeah, so putting the escrows to the side, we just talked about them. Let's talk about the actual fees here. So, um, I'm glad you brought up that question. It's a little bit of a complicated question, but we did do some analysis to try to boil it down, so we're comparing apples to apples. So we took all the special use, uh, or, yeah, all the special use requests, all the site plan reviews, all the site plan amendments, and all the special use amendments that we did in fiscal year 2022. And we took those at their baseline cost. So a lot of these are factored to, you know, how many acres the site is, how many units are going in. So putting all that aside and just taking their base costs, in 2022, with those fees for, once again, commercial developments, we took in about $7,000. So according to the new fee schedule, or the proposed fee schedule here in front of you, what that dollar amount would look like in, um, 2023 would be $9,000. It's about a 20% increase, a 28% increase. Now, going back and looking at what the rate of inflation has been, and this is where I wanna say that we're very competitive and we're very conservative with these fees in Bath Township, even what's proposed here today. If we were just to take the fees from 2005 and use inflation as a calculator of what these fees should be projected to today, we would be over a 35% increase. So these fees have not by any means kept up with the rate of inflation, nor have they kept up with the level of sophistication that a site plan review requires in 2023 versus what a site plan review required in 2005. We're much more sophisticated with our site plan reviews these days. To the, uh, to the frustration, I think, of some of our developers, but maybe to the appreciation of some of our community members, as you've heard at our last meeting about Marshpoint Townhomes, previous properties that have been approved in the past, there's been things that maybe people wish they now could go back and have a little bit more resources to go after some agreements that were made.
Are the municipalities doing that, or have they already been increasing right along? We just have...
We are on the low, far lower end.
Okay, so they've been increasing right along?
That would be my assumption.
So it's not a huge increase.
It's not.
I was expecting you to say like, tens of thousands of dollars, but it's...
These are, these are not...
Two thousand dollars more.
Yeah, these are not large increases, by any means.
That's helpful.
We are still very competitive, and once again, this primarily targets commercial development. Your average Bath Township homeowner will not be affected in any way. I would argue they would actually benefit from this, because they have to subsidize development less.
Thanks, that's really helpful.
First one, I appreciate it. You have another question? Make sure they ask that before I tell you to sit down. All right. You can answer while you're way down. Thank you. All right. We are now, let me see where we're at here. We're at B, which is items for action. Under thirteen. So those of you that are following. And this one is items for action for the public petition to abandon a portion of Webster Road right away.
Thank you. Based on the conversations that have been had tonight, there are several options I'd leave for this board that you can take. You can take no action. You could support the petition to abandon the right of way. You could also, from the aspect of contesting, you could choose not to contest, um, the petition to abandon the public road right of way. Um, and that would be a signal to, I guess, the road commission that you're taking no action, but you're not gonna contest the process that they go through to, um, to do that.
You gonna bring this back to us then?
No.
Okay.
No, this is, I'm just saying there, I'm just saying that there are options as far as your motions tonight. Um, you don't have to support the petition or not support the petition. I'm saying that there are other ways in which you could craft a motion tonight.
Okay, you guys wanna recraft this motion? All right? Apparently not, so we'll take a hope.
Well, there's, there's no motion.
Well, it says items for action.
Someone's gotta make a motion, Marie.
That's what I'm saying. So who's gonna make the motion?
I'll, I'll jump in there, then everybody can hear me.
Bonfide?
The, the, I would move to, uh, follow along with the drain commission and stand in not contesting the abandonment of the roadway.
Now contest it.
Right. And that's, that's exactly what the, that's my understanding with the drain commission's rule. Process was that we will hand in hand with them to allow people to use their property, but not the property of the private landowners necessarily.
That wasn't my understanding of what he said, but I know you got a motion, so I, we can talk about it.
Well, we need a second, then you can talk about it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay. I'll second him. So now live discussion.
So what I heard Steve him saying was that he was not going to sign on to the petition, not that he was not going to contest. And what I understood from what Karen just said is those are two different things.
Not, not my way, I understand that. I, I understand it as being one of the same, but that's my understanding.
Is, I mean, can you give us context for why you said that?
Um, because I think that if we don't sign on, thank you. Um, it's, it's my opinion, and my opinion may vary from all of yours, but it's my opinion that you would be sending a message to the road commission that you may not support the abandonment, that you will not contest it. Because they, they spoke clearly tonight about the people that signed on to the petition and what that means and how they go into that decision. So to me, not contesting it would mean you're, in my opinion, it would mean you're staying neutral and that you wouldn't intend to contest the abandonment of the right of way.
So you're saying, take no action and contest? Not contest, excuse me.
Not contest. And giving it, leaving it clearly in the, in the hands of the people and however they wanna proceed with this, whether they, if they wanna proceed with that, their property owners, if they wanna proceed differently from what the township and the drain commission has, then they have that opportunity, and they get their piece, and the people for the trail still have an option of working with the drain commission to get around the, the road roadway. I think it's been very established that, that, obviously, it's established that, um, there's access to the property from the point of the township or from the point of the public safety. That, that's not, that's not an issue here. I think that was established, it was all the conversation we had. Mr. Terney himself said that. So that, that's not why I based my... I, I look at it as, as we did something for everybody here, that the road commission can move forward. You know, you got people that talk about, uh, the safety factor, maybe kids riding their bikes down the road, not riding their bikes down the road, and everything else. There's a, there's a good point right there. Well, I'll, I'll give you another good point, and this is just my own personal feeling. My personal feeling is there needs to be a sidewalk all the way around Parkway, on Parkway Road, to take care of the safety issue there. One, one of these days, somebody's gonna get killed down there, and then we're gonna own that. And, and everybody in this room's gonna own that, and that, and that needs to be addressed. And I'm sorry, I, maybe the trail people don't like me, but to me, that's a bigger issue than, than the trail. And it does more for the life, uh, for now. I ain't saying the trail ain't important, you're always gonna have that property. The property ain't going anywhere. It's, it's there, it's, it's, it's not going anywhere. And someday, it'll probably come to attrition. The, the real, sometimes Maggie said something about competition or competition bait. Well, you know what? She, she isn't too far off on that, but the issue is, is Parkway Road and the amount of people that's on there, and the amount of people who's put investments in their property, the amount of property township has put investments in. And Marie, you complain all the time, 'cause my name's on it, that piece of property. Yes, it is, not a damn problem. But, but the thing about it, but the thing about it is, I, I think that the, the, uh, I think that that's a bigger, bigger caveat. I just think it's a bigger thing. I think the township could do a lot with that. Mr. Omri, you sat right out there in the audience right there. He was very instrumental in getting safe routes to school. Why can't we get safe routes around Parkway? And that, that's my, that's my, my take on that.
Could I ask one more clarification on this?
Yeah.
Sherry and I were talking out there, and I don't mean to speak for you, Sherry, but I, I think we were on the same page where our understanding was if we did not sign on to the petition as a landholder, that that would automatically kick the petition into the contested side, the much more complex side. So, but what now, what I'm hearing is maybe we can not sign on and tell them we're not contesting, which would allow it to go the easier route?
No.
No? Okay.
I think, I think it still has to go through the more complicated process because we are not signing on to it. But I think you're sending a message that you're not going to contest it.
We're not helping, we're not helping finance the... We're, we're not helping, we're not helping finance the, the people who are property owners. And there's more than two, there's actually three of those down in there. We're not helping, we're not helping finance their, their private land, well, keeping the private land. However, I will say this, as a private land owner, I'm very protective of personal property rights. And years ago, you, most of you people in this room don't know this, but we had a railroad grid that went through Bath that got abandoned. And I was instrumentally involved in that. And it was, it was a very big, bigger fight than this one has been. And frankly, honestly, I was one of the only, one of the people who fought. Five of us went together. We fought the railroad all the way from Bath all the way to Wausau. And then we split it out and we sold it. Parson LeDang hired, fired three lawyers before we got the job done, but we got it done. I testified from the legislature and personally, it was before I was in township government. But I got me into township government, I guess I can say. But, but it, property is a big deal, guys. And, and it's, property ownership is huge. I, I myself voted and, and, or campaigned against that project. Later in life, I'm going to tell you something. Later in life, as my kids got older, we did a lot of snowmobiling. And a lot of these rail trails that was out there, we, we rode thousands of miles a year on snowmobiles on these rail trails and everything. I used them more than anybody. When I got done using them, I had a different opinion about what the use of the trail was. Now, that was all in northern Michigan. It wasn't here in, in, in a, a place where we live today, but it was, but it was in northern Michigan. So I, I, I used it and it's like everybody does. Everybody grows and when they, when they get older, they learn things and whatnot. But I think you missed over here. I, I have made a comment about that, to, to present it. And I, and I do feel that the, the safer routes around Park Lake is the more important thing that we should be pursuing. Yes, there is money. And yes, there's, there's help that could be gotten from the road commission. There's grants. You got this Webster Road thing that's going on. You already got a sidewalk all the way to the community center. I parked at the church here and walked all the way down there to go to the open house for the police chief. And, and you know, the sidewalk ends right there, right there at the community center. Wouldn't it be nice if we could figure out how to get over the water hole there and get around and go by the gentleman's house right there that lives down there where the sewer thing and the sidewalk would go right by Judy's house and everybody else's house goes all the way to the other end? That's, that's the reason why I based my opinion on not contesting the, the process because I think it gives everybody a shot to keep in the game. It gives everybody a shot to do things here. And I think it protects our, our community. That's my motion.
Say it one more time so that none of you do I know it.
I, I, I made a motion, I made a motion not to contest the abandonment of Webster Road.
No, what do you mean?
Be non-contested.
You wanted to tell the drain commission.
That's correct.
And not sign on the petition, you said?
That's not, that's not, not contest. That's one, that's the third option that they actually laid out that you can do.
But you're choo, you're choosing to not contest it?
That's correct.
So does that mean you sign the petition or you don't?
We don't sign.
You don't sign?
That's what I thought.
We don't have to, we don't have to sign it. The same as the drain commission don't have to sign it. And if our properties want to be used down the road and we want to use something to make a trail down the road, we can. The only thing we're doing is shoring up the, the safety pieces and the personal property ownership of the parcels that's down there for the landlords. Everybody gets something in that.
So what you're saying is you're not going to contest the abandonment?
Yep.
They're going to abandon it?
Yep.
But we're not going to contest?
I don't know if they're going to abandon it. That's, that's dependent upon what their, their thing that they turn in. And how, and that, and that'll be, be viewed by the road commission.
It will be viewed and they have to follow their old rules. That's why I want a little more time to think on it. Okay.
Is there a question?
Is there? I'm sorry. So that's what happens when you're down there.
I, I agree, Steve, that we should not sign on the petition. What I worry about is if we don't contest without having the pieces in place to ensure the easements across the drain commissioner's property or agreements with the property or having that stuff in place, that we lose any leverage to ensure that it does get in place. So I, I sort of like your stance on neutrality and, you know, let the road commission sort of hash it out. I do worry if they decide to abandon without these pieces in place, there's, there's just not much leverage to make sure they happen.
Along with that, it has to be understood that
I, I'm, okay.
That it's a political position, so that changes to, Phil does a wonderful job. He really does, you know, with his commissioners, et cetera. We really do like him. But that can change too.
I, I was going to say, if you're concerned about that aspect, once, once whatever decision is made by the road commission is complete, you could direct me to bring that back to you for further discussion and action. So if you wanted the township to come to the table with the drain commission and property owners, I mean, you, you could direct that.
Yeah, we just lose all our leverage. Like it's all by volunt, you know, volunteer showing up and voluntarily giving things up. At least now there's some amount of leverage to say, you know, property owners want people to stop trespassing. I think that is a reasonable thing to request. But folks want some guarantees in place that it wouldn't be the stopper. We wouldn't, as a board, use it as a de facto stopper for the trail. And that's the piece that still would be hanging out there. So I like the sentiment. I'm worried that if people don't come to the table, we don't see this happen.
I feel as though if the road commission were to not abandon it, there's also conversation and discussion that needs to happen here as well either way. Because I think there's delineation. I think there's, there's a lot of things that would need to happen to protect the rights of the property owners of the end of Webster Road and, and to keep people on a safe path to, to the trail and onto the trail.
Yeah, I agree. I just think we lose the leverage in that. It would be great and, you know, to Marie's point about this taking longer, I, I don't disagree with that, but I think the petitioners have asked us to do this and they've been waiting weeks for us to take action. So I think they deserve an answer. But, you know, Karen, have you brought this to us? Like we've sat down with the property owners, we've sat down with the Park Lake people, we've sat down with Phil Hanses and we've worked out the easement. So we've built a, it's in place where we could build an access point for the trail. That being partnered then with, we're now asking you to abandon or sign on to the petition to abandon the right of way, it would make me feel like there is definitely a guaranteed win for both sides. In this case, the way the motion is read, there's only one guaranteed win. It's the petition holder.
I don't think, I don't think that during those meetings that those things were ever... I, I think tonight has been the clearest and the most thorough, responsible from the road commission and the drain commission. I mean, we talked about easements and access to things, but I think what you had tonight was the clearest answer of a way forward than we've, than we've had before. There was not a predetermined.
No, I agree. I'm not criticizing that you should have done that. I'm saying I would feel more comfortable with Steve's motion if we were coming with like, we've got this in place and this in place. I understand, we didn't know that, that those things existed until tonight.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm hesitant. I don't want to hold up the petition. And frankly, they could move the petition forward regardless of what we do. But it, it does make me nervous to sort of let our piece of it out of our hands without having some guarantees that we'll at least sit down and talk about this.
Well, would you like an amendment to my motion? That the board is going to take and sit down and continue to pursue the access of the trail? But we're going, we're, we're not going to contest the closing of the road? Is that what you're looking for? Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, I'd be more comfortable, and I'm just one board member up here, Steve, but I'd be more comfortable saying at this point, we're not going to sign on to the petition. Not stating that we're for or against contesting, but that we're not ready to sign on. If the petition folks want to move forward, that, that's their right. Or if they're saying, what if we could come do an agreement together? You know, Karen could help facilitate those meetings and then bring that petition forward to us to sign on to. I just feel so much more comfortable saying, yeah, we'll help, you know, or we'll support abandoning the right of way, knowing that these other pieces are in place to guarantee, not, not that we're going to build the trail, but at least we have a pathway to build the trail in the future, should the board decide to do that.
I would agree with that, with the caveat that it be added that this board be included in those discussions. Because as I'm listening, I learned so much just by listening to what others were saying, what some of our board members were saying. That was very informative for me. What I feel is kind of left out of the process. So if there could be a further amendment to your not contesting as long as the total board is involved in those discussions, then I think I'm understanding what you're saying because I happen to agree with that, believe it or not.
Oh my gosh. It must be cold down below tonight.
Well, it's not cold down there, but the weather's a little bit cold. I see that.
Marie, can you turn your microphone on please?
It is on.
It's on. It's off.
It's off.
Oh, is it on now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. How'd you know it was off?
Because I just happened to look over and saw that the button went off.
Good eyes. I used to have that in another life, but hey, not this one. All right, now it's on.
Thank you.
You're welcome. A little hand up here.
I agree with Ryan. I think we need to have some clear understanding of what things are. Like when I looked at this map for the first time today, did I realize that Terramie's property was like this close to the trail? There's no, you know, we should go around there. We shouldn't have to have a trail one inch away unless we put a fence up or something. So details haven't been worked out. Or can we go around the other way from the north and come down with the trail and not walk along his six inches of property line there to protect the property owners and do the trail at the same time? But these things need to be clearly in cement, not, well, maybe you can do whatever you want as you go along. I didn't know, I couldn't get any, everything I asked until today, I got completely different answers from the people that were for or against and why. And I didn't understand any of it.
Yeah.
And this is too soon to me to say what our other issues, protect your property, that we do this. And I like the idea of no cars down the road personally, but not to cut access off to a trail if we ever build one. And is that for sure? There's kind of too many gray areas in the whole scheme here that I don't feel comfortable saying, oh, sure, go ahead and do whatever you want. I don't like it.
By motion on the floor, property owners can proceed without us. Because that's, that's surely what they can do.
Yep, and that's entirely up to that. All right, there's a motion, the motion's on the floor, which says if there be no, you should understand that you're signing the petition, so we're going to agree with.
Not to contest.
Not to contest it. Thank you. That's, that's true.
So just to, to confirm, because there's a lot of negatives in here, a no vote would be to not, not contest and sign on. Okay.
A no vote would be, a no vote would be to not contest. It would not be, that would not be a yes vote.
Right.
Not to contest. That's if everybody voted yes, we wouldn't contest the road right of way abandonment. That's what a yes vote does.
Got it.
A no vote, a no vote will, will defeat the motion and you're back to where you started.
Except that you said not to contest it.
Not to contest the road abandonment.
So if you don't support, you're not contesting it?
If you, you vote yes, not to, not to, not to contest the road abandonment, then the, those of the county and they make their decision based on us. We don't know this for a fact, but we think that Phil Hanses, unless he's going to change his mind, is, is going to do the same. He's going to recommend the same as well. And I, I thought I heard him say he had to go, had to go to county board.
He has to go to the board.
He has to, yes, yeah.
Yes.
The commissioner's not here, so we can't ask that, but.
That was my understanding.
But that, that was my understanding.
That's what he said.
But that's, if you vote yes for that, that's, that's the way that works. And, and they're off on their own, the, the, the property owners are off on their own to take and protect their property rights or however you want to look at it.
My impression, Steve, of what he was saying was that he was not going to go to the commission because he was not interested in signing it. What he had said was if I, if I was going to sign it, I would have to get permission from the commission. But the tone and the language choice made it sound like he wasn't going to ask.
He was pro for the, for the, to let people have a trail there and use the drain and make it happen. We had to enter into a other agreement with him to make that happen.
Right.
And that would be the same thing as what we would be doing. We'd have to enter into an agreement with him along with our, our own property and that. Basically, the only thing they're doing here is they're abandoning the road right of way. That isn't even wide enough to be a legal road.
That's right.
But I mean, I mean, it's, it's not even, it's not even a 66-foot road. It's, it's, it's not even half of that. The road right of way, the road that's actually there.
That's the question.
The road, the road right of way is 66 foot, maybe.
This is one, just the road. Technically, the road is.
33 feet in the center of the road, you know. And if you look at that map, in the center line, that, that's where they've got it leading out. And what that tells you is, is Mr. Boyle, Mrs. Smith, Mr. Terramie, and all them people are just like everybody that's in this room right here. You all own your property runs to the center of the road, wherever that is. But you live on Park Lake Road, you live up the road or wherever you live, you own to the center of the road by your deed. It don't always work out that way, but that's, that's what the law actually. If you look at what your easement says, what your, your deed says, that's what it says, you own to the center of the road. So they technically, they, they, what she, what Mrs. Smith has been saying all along is she owns to the other side of the Blacktop Road and, and part of the burn. And they, they mow that. And I'd have to believe that maybe if that is true, I have looked at their deed, but if their deed says that, then I would think that maybe they do own to the center line. But I, I, I think you're still splitting here and there. I think you can have both. I think you can have the abandonment of the roadway. And I think you can move on with the trail. This isn't going to be a simple thing. You don't want to build a trail that's, that's going to be a problem down the road. Every time you turn around, you have to get down there with the police department and spend dollars and cents on enforcement and things. You don't want it to be a, a bad thing. You don't want people coming down there with horse trailers. And horses will want to go for a ride on a horseback on, on the trail or whatever it could be and not have a place to park. I mean, this is a bought-out law. That whole infrastructure part of that thing needs to be thought out even more. And they're right, it's going to cost a lot of money. I mean, that's what it is. Going back to what I said, I'm, I'm a fan of sidewalks around Park Lake. That's my, that's my, my piece on that. I think the money is better spent there. $2 million for a trail or $2 million for sidewalks in the wrong Park Lake can keep a kid from getting run over. That's actually, in my opinion.
Okay, there's the motion. I need to listen to it again. I know. Hold it to you, Reader's Digest.
I don't even see what you're saying. That Texas, you, Texas, you own it.
Reader's Digest version.
The, my motion is to not, to not to contest the abandonment of Webster Road from the road end roadway, to the, to the roadway. Not to contest, but no contest, but not to contest it. A vote yes would not contest that if the motion would pass. A vote no, the motion would fail.
I'm going to vote no, but I'm with you spiritually. I like the larger thought about it, but I have a little concern.
It only takes a leap, that's all I.
I'm just letting you know.
It's kind of like the one book project.
All right, so we have the.
Al, you're okay with it for a second?
Yeah.
You got the motion?
Okay. Mr. Wissler?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fumas Bliss?
No.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Callender, yes? Ms. Howe?
Strange bird. For those who say we all talk back and forth, believe me, there's no talking.
The only talk takes place here. That's the only talk. Okay. Now, so, okay, this is, that's amended.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's amended? Nothing was amended.
Nothing was amended.
Okay.
That's what Steve said, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, he did. He put an amendment in because he put in not to contest it, which this is, this, we were voting on whether or not you were going to.
And he stated that when I last interviewed him.
Yes. And then you were reading it, when we were going to access, when we were going to sign on, his signature. That's what this, and what Steve said, we're not doing that. There's no contest.
There's no contest.
Correct. So that is different than what this was written.
Okay.
All right, so we now are on. I use for action, B is a void, B, contract for both of you.
Thank you. So this is, of course, as you know, gone through many iterations, and it does now include the five trees on Center Road as requested by trustee Rosecrans, as well as the work on Drumheller Road for the same price that you saw before of thirty thousand dollars.
They thought those trees were dangerous on Center Road when they talked to us and they gave us the first bit.
Yep. And they agree, they agree with your recollection of that. So thank you very much.
I have a question.
Shoot.
Does this mean, Al, you're a Rook Committee person, does this mean that we're, we're going to go ahead with black copying Drumheller Road from Webster Road to, to Cannon Road, or does this mean we're just cleaning?
You mean how I would vote, or what does this means? All this means is that.
What does that mean? I mean, does it mean such a doing that, since it was already pointed out to me from a former board member that that's the first step to black copying the roads?
No, the county said the road needs to have the ditches and them trees. They are very dangerous. The one is in Job's Yard and the other is in the Burnett Girls' Yard. And they both will take the wood, and they're, they're right on, the stump is right on the, in the edge of the road right away. And somebody's going to hit them trees. And they were going to do some ditch, ditching along Drumheller to help protect that road.
That was a question.
Yeah, they're, they're, no, they're not, unless you give me six, six hundred thousand dollars. No, this is only the.
You're going to build sidewalks and trails and everything else, and I just got to figure out where you're going with the money. That's good.
Joe, you're not going anywhere with the money.
No. We got a good treasure.
No, I just, I, I'm people, even former board members ask me all the time what's going on, and I just don't, I don't know. I'll find out, I'll ask.
So you're comfortable with this?
Yeah, we, I move we sign the contract with the county on Drumheller and Center Road.
Second.
We already did discussion, so we're good.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes? Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Westhuster?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Well, and the county will be down here Thursday. Isn't it Thurs-? Yeah, Thursday at five o'clock.
For a Rook Committee meeting.
For a Rook Committee meeting.
Down here for Rook Committee? No, up there for Rook Committee.
Down here.
They're coming here?
Oh, yeah. Oh, we, we rate.
Mark, Mark always tends our Rook Committee meetings. Mark Trotter.
Yeah, he's very good.
Yeah.
All right, we'll go on, and the next one is to amend the twenty-three Board of Trustees and Committee Meeting Period. That's for, all right, what I forgot to hand out earlier, which ended up now, is what recently was given for a new book. It just came out, Chris C. Dodge. And basically, what I'm saying and proposing is that the Board of Review is putting on our calendar the dates, not the date for March, July, just say March, July, December, because people had a real issue with numbers. But, you know, you can read that and see.
Is there a copy of that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Joe's, because he's not here.
Joe's enjoying Florida.
He's what?
He's enjoying Florida right now.
Oh, I'm going to hear.
Watching us.
He's watching us right now, so I've got some things to say to Joe.
The wrath of Joe is on you.
I won't swear to Joe, but, you know, I hope he's enjoying himself. It's been good night sun day. So anyway, what you have to do is vote on this as to whether or not you're going to add the Board of Review, which has not been on our calendars before. This is a public hearing in March, July, and in December. So it's public hearings, as far as I was concerned, being secretary, this was really an important piece that needed to be added. It also had numerous statements in a number of books with regards to public, you know, public access to all of these. And there's a general property tax act in the state of Michigan, and you also had the Board of Review update. So this is the update, so the Michigan Township Association also. Now, I talked to the chair, which is Jeff Sloy, for the Board of Review.
Can I correct that? Because he's not the chair yet, because they haven't had their organizational meeting.
At the March. So up until that time, isn't he still?
And as of December thirty-first, he's not the chair.
Right, so we don't have a chair. So I talked to the former chair, and he didn't understand. He said, it's already public, isn't it? And it's mandated. And I said, yes. I didn't get a response back from you as to whether, and again, this is Beth Bakke, who's our assessor. So, as you all know that. So the question is, do you add this to our calendar so that the public will know that March, July, and December are the months that they're attended and open? Because they are public access. And it was brought up a while back, this is like the third time that I've put this in. It was brought up before that these are private. Well, they're not private if they're public. So when I asked that question, the statement was, when I went to this retreat on it, the statement was that, no, there isn't really anything that's public. I mean, it's anything private, it's always public because people can come, but they have to know about it first. So this is part of what that is, is to just put on our calendar, so it's not a well-kept secret, that our Board of Review has an organizational meeting in March, they meet July, and they meet in December. And according to this wheel, which I thought Cindy did a really great job on this, it explains, and I'll give you a copy because I just.
I've been planning.
I thought you did, because her book, she just came out with her book. But anyway, for this, that's, that's for you to look at and see what it shows for us to add to our calendar. So I feel like I'm repeating myself. Go ahead.
What I, I just want to clarify, what I had heard at a previous meeting was that once the group meets and actually sets dates, month and date, we put it on the public township calendar. Is that correct? Would you say, Taylor, since you're the one who manages this, is that the, the best or the most often utilized public way to find out when stuff is happening in the township?
Well, I would also offer, if it's okay with this board, for Assessor Bakke to also speak to the additional communications that she makes public. Really, the only thing that I do, after she provides me with the notice and the dates, is I put that on the township calendar, and then I upload it to the website. Assessor Bakke puts it in numerous other public places as well.
Okay. My concern was putting it on the, you know, the calendar we vote on, I don't think the public really looks at that or sees that. I think what they look at is what we do that's public-facing and probably Beth, what you send out. It seems like that's the, the better vehicle for this.
Why do we do it?
Do what?
All our committees.
It's so that committee members know when their meetings are scheduled.
Yeah, okay. So they already know that they're members of the Board of Review.
They decide on when they meet during the March meeting, and at times they change the times depending on how many appointments are scheduled with Assessor Bakke. So that is not always.
Yes, but the month of July is always there for the, so people would know to go and check. And yes, they do, with the.
I invited.
I get that quite often.
Per this board's request, I invited the assessor to join us tonight so that she could clarify the process that she undertakes.
I haven't had any communication with her, so very good.
Okay. Possibly you could explain the process you go through to notify.
Beth Bakke, Bath Township Assessor, and I could say that it's not, we follow all the statute of the law. So while we're doing our noticing and everything, it, we make sure that we meet the needs of the public. We send it out in their notices. We have it on our website. One, Taylor puts it out there. It's not hidden. It's there for the public to see. So statutorily, we're meeting all the requirements that we have to for all of our meeting dates as we're putting them out there. Sometimes we end up with unnecessary work when people are, put stuff in front of us that they don't understand all of the parts of it. So that would be one of my things. We do send notices out to all the residents, every property owner. We, we send out an assessment notice each year, has the dates on it, has my phone number on it, has my email address on it, has communication. If somebody calls in and makes an appointment, we send back out to them a copy of their record card or copy of their appointment date and anything that they need to be able to address the board. So we meet all of the standards that we need to for the requirements by law. Does anybody have any other questions?
Well, it looks like we're good.
Okay.
All right, so to vote.
What's the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion would be to amend the, this assessor, the twenty-three Board Trustees and Committee Meeting Dates by adding the Board of Review.
Specific dates, or you want to add it like this?
No, it would be added the way that they have it here, so that you meet in March, which is your organizational.
No, I understand. I'm just asking what your motion is. Is it this, or is it this?
No. Which is that.
It's in the packet.
Here.
Oh.
You want a copy?
It is, sorry. Print two pages on one page.
Two pages on one page. I'm looking at that one. No, I didn't have that. No, it's, you're, you're voting on this. You're voting on my request for having the Board of Review put on the calendar.
But I'm just clarifying, this one has specific dates. This one does not.
Didn't get the update?
It should say March twenty-twenty-three, July twenty-twenty-three, and December twenty-three.
No dates, so I don't know what.
Well, it says Tuesday following the third, Monday in July.
That's what they, that's what it's put in statute.
Right. It may not list the date, but that is functionally a date. That's why I'm trying to dig down what we're talking about. So you want specific dates, not the way you've distributed it here, which is just months.
I want it as March, and it says statutorily that it's Tuesday following the first Monday. Now, that has to be organized with what three other townships do you deal with? So the same kind of March organizational meeting has to be placed within a five-day period. So it has to be determined when it is, and they're saying this, so they have to have a resolution with the other.
No, I know how it works. I'm just trying to clarify what you're asking us to vote on. Because this, Maria, I support this. This battles us into a specific timeframe.
No, this says in March, even though it says the Tuesday following, that's statutory language.
I understand, but that is very specific.
It's statutory language.
I'm not arguing that. This says March. This says the first meeting, blah, 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 blah. Do you see the difference? This is general, this.
I don't see the difference, because one is statutory in March.
Okay, if you could let the statutory piece go. I'm just trying to get you to understand. Saying the month of March, I think is, is very reasonable, makes sense. It allows them to set their date. Setting the specific date is specific.
Well, if that makes you happy, just remove it. If that's, if that makes you more comfortable to vote yes for it, then you amend it and you take out statutory language and just say March of twenty-twenty-three.
Well, are you open to that?
Sure.
Okay, well, then I would propose that.
I don't care, because she has to, you know, our assessor has to figure out all the, what she's dealing in.
That is what I would propose, if Maria's open to that.
I'll second it.
Certainly, certainly open to that. It doesn't make any difference to me. That's just statutory language.
Well, I appreciate your flexibility on it.
That is all it was. Whatever you want to do.
So we're adding the month and the year?
Just the month and the? Well, only because it's twenty-twenty-three. If it's on the calendar, it was twenty-twenty-four.
So we're deciding the month?
Yeah, we're just.
Okay.
Does anyone have a question?
Shoot.
Who, who's the author of this document?
I am. Got a vote?
Oh.
Okay.
Well, who wrote that?
I did.
That has specific dates on it.
So we're taking that off, and.
We got a vote.
Your annual property.
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Bakke, what would you prefer as the, as the assessor?
I don't deserve, I mean, I just, I don't really, it doesn't really matter to me. I mean, if you guys want to put it on there, I know that it's not statutory required by law. That's up to the board, and I'll go by the pleasure of the board.
When we make appointments up here in front of the Board of Review, will people know what they're making appointments for, what we're doing here, Karen? I mean, is that, I mean, it's going to go to you to figure out when your Board of Review is going to meet, am I correct?
Right. This is not going to give direction to the public. The, to what, when the dates are set and sent out to each of the residents, then they will actually know that. But if you're just saying July, March, July, and December for a meeting, that's not going to really give direction to our residents.
And I would disagree with that. I think it does give direction, but that's okay. Whatever you guys want. That's what the board is for.
We just put the month on there. How is Taylor going to put it on the calendar so people would know?
Just so that she knows it'll be Board of Review month.
I, I think she's speaking to the document, not the actual township calendar. She's speaking to the meeting dates on it, I believe.
Thank you.
Oh, you're. I was speaking towards the calendar.
Okay. Then I'm going to answer the calendar, because of the calendar, what it would say is Board of Review meetings in March, July, and December. That's all.
There's a paper calendar and an electronic calendar. I think that's the confusion.
Yeah.
I don't think Taylor would update the electronic calendar until God puts up those dates.
Correct. But the calendar that we get, that tells us when the meetings are to be met and if it's a holiday or.
The paper calendar that's posted out in the hallway.
Yes, exactly.
Are taxpaying residents will know what day their process is going to take place, correct?
Yes.
Yes, and they will call and ask.
I'll make sure of that.
No.
I'm confusing, even I'm just the third.
We always can make things very confusing, so that's okay. Where do you get the next one? You think you're confused now?
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
Was there a second?
We are. Al, Al seconded.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes. Just had to remind myself what we were doing. Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes? Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Westhuster?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now comes the really confusing one.
Let's see that.
Yeah, all right. The interesting one with this one actually ended up, and this is why you have two sheets, and one will explain to you because it does have dates on it, as to the police and fire board, which is what this one refers to. It says appointments, but they're not appointments. What you're going to have to determine at this board meeting is whether this fire, police and fire board advisory board is going to meet every, for three years, when your appointments come in, or for four years, for your appointments. Initially, I didn't think too much about it until I started looking at the calendar a little closer. And they're all released on the twenty-third, or they're all released on the twenty-second. So I started doing some research on it and found that some of them actually were gone in twenty-twenty-one, or in twenty-twenty. The only one, the only one a police officer, that was a four-year term, which expired in supposedly twenty-three, but actually, he was appointed January sixth. And he was appointed for four years. He's the only one out of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So what I'm looking for is a decision as to whether it be three years or four years. So I guess my motion would be that you would accept, you would vote on whether or not your appointments would be good for three years.
So you're moving that it would be three years?
Moving that it would be three years, which means that this board, except for Lee McAllister, they're all up.
So you're, you're actually asking us to change the current terms of folks, not just moving forward?
No, I'm not asking you to change the current. For some reason, it was determined on, and I don't know if it was when Mrs. Hodges, Reeves-Hodges, correct?
Hodge.
Hodge, not Hodge. Not Hodges, not plural, Hodge. It ended up saying it was the 23rd that that board is eliminated.
No, their term is up.
That's what I mean.
They're not eliminated because they can be put back. They're not like retread tires.
Yeah, they are like.
No, they're not.
But.
They're very good people.
They retread many times over, but what I'm trying to say is, as of the 23rd of December, that board no longer has any members.
Why the 23rd?
Do you, do you mean 2023?
Oh, okay.
I was just trying to clarify.
No, no, that's, write it out, 2023.
So, Marie, in, in that motion, it says, is this your document in the packet? Okay. So, Lee McAllister, it says the fourth year would be 2023. So, if we approve your motion, does that change his term?
No, he would still be good until 23.
Okay, so then moving forward, it would be three years? Because this would be his fourth year?
Well, that would be the question. That would, yes, that would be the question, that moving forward, it would be a three-year term that you would appoint.
But we would let him finish this last year?
We have to because he's good until 23.
Well, we could change that. That's why I'm trying to clarify what you're asking us to change.
That's what I'm trying to tell you. For some reason, Jack had determined, our former supervisor, of when these people might create, and Brian Jass and Gary doesn't want to be there anymore, so that's an opening. And that will be, that would be determined at your next meeting.
So, you're just asking us the term right now? You're not asking us to vote on actual people?
No, there are no appointments at this point for the simple reason, and Taylor and I talked about it. Sorry, I shouldn't do that.
That's fine.
Your formal is Mrs. Reeves Hodge had said our deputy superintendent. She and I had a discussion about this, and this actually worked with her, so we can move you out of that. And in that, we found that the documentation that our former supervisor had, gave them three-year terms, all the way through, up until Lee McAllister. He was the lone one that for some reason chose for four years. I think, no?
No, I was just saying, the documentation you had, yes, said 2022. However, after.
No, the documentation you had and what our clerk had, because you brought it to the meeting, that's when the three of us met and tried to.
Correct, but then I also discussed the process that was done afterwards.
Which was?
When Supervisor Phillips.
That's correct.
Have discussions with the members after realizing that they should have done four terms based on what was done previously.
That's all verbal.
I understand that. But I'm saying that that is why there is a difference between your documentation and my documentation, where I have in my spreadsheet that I keep for all terms stating that they all expire in 2023.
And again, that was a verbal.
I understand that. However, that is why I have in my documentation.
That's what we talked about, because the documentation all shows different than your verbal.
My recommendation would be to either confirm previous Supervisor Phillips's determination of four years. I, I think there needs to be a decision made to, that these people are either serving through 2023 or that they're not.
That's correct, that's what I'm asking of. That's what we're talking about.
Wait, I'm sorry. I thought you said that's not what we're talking about.
No.
We're not voting on people.
No, we're not voting on people.
Okay, so we're not.
Essentially, we are. What I understood with our discussion was that if this board chose to make the terms four years, that it would then be based off of the spreadsheet that I currently have, showing that all members expire at the end of this year. So, they would all remain members, apart from Gary Conley, who has indicated that he would wish to resign. If it was determined that they would be three years, then the only person that would be left on the committee is Lee McAllister.
That's correct.
So, you are, they're voting on the terms.
No, they're voting on terms. And the terms are documented as being three years, except for.
But if you vote on a three-year term, you're limiting the people.
I have people to take their place.
I made the motion to their four years.
Second.
You guys can do what you want to do.
All right. I mean, that was your motion, wasn't it?
My motion was the three years.
No, she wanted three years.
Oh, and it didn't get a second.
Careful sometimes, you've got to be careful.
So.
My motion was to vote on a three-year.
That was last.
Yeah, this is the second time this has been up. Yes.
Bring in my, I had a talk with Jack Phillips, and Jack would like to be back on the, be on the police and fire board. So, I'm going to get him to bring in a, because I'm hearing so much of what Jack has said and what Jack hasn't said, that being on the board would be able to clarify a lot of this.
I don't have an issue with everybody else.
I talked to him, and he's, he's considering it.
Good for him. I would like to have his approval. Yes.
I just want to clarify the repercussions of this vote, because it sounds like we're not all on the same page. If we approve the motion that my two colleagues have made to make it four years, the idea is that we're applying it to the current members, not that we are moving forward beyond new members. Is that the intention of your motion? So, then your intention is that these people would be able to go through 2023? Okay. I, I love it. I'm with you. Just wanted to make sure I knew what we were talking about.
No, my motion was, and I had the motion on the floor first, that it be three years for this, because as you look at this, if you paid any attention at all, without just going and looking at it, you'll end up seeing board review is two years, planning commissions four. These are statutory requirements that they have. The majority of them are three years, probably four to two quarters of them are three-year terms. This one became kind of odd from the standpoint that all of them are done at the same time, whether it be in 2023 or whether or not it be 2022.
Yeah. It sounds like their intention is we'd have a year to, to read, jiggle, and stagger, and do what we need to do.
I don't know what the intent was.
Well, I mean, that's what they said the intent was.
Restagger them like they should be.
Yes.
And that starts with Lee McAllister, and it will start with the others that I have to add to it.
But, right, but what their motion is saying that that wouldn't start until moving forward beyond 2023.
Beyond 2023, it would be a three-year or a four-year. My motion is for a three-year.
Right. I thought your motion died with, because of a lack of a second. I thought we had moved on. I'm sorry.
No, I didn't.
So, you make your motion. Go ahead.
All right. My, okay. My motion, again, had to do with three-year term, so that that's what you're voting on one thing. When we had the discussion in our meeting, it became very clear of the confusion, yes, that would be taking place. That's why I said to take on, because this would be more confusing than the other. And that's why there are no appointments. I have appointments for next meeting.
So, in your motion to make it three.
In my motion today, it is that we have three-year terms as opposed to a four-year term.
But in your motion, the repercussions of that would be these people are done?
These people are done in 23, 2023. Wouldn't make any difference.
No, no.
No, they're not in 2022, opposite of one.
That's correct. They're all done.
So, they're all done.
That's correct. But if it were four years, which is what, isn't that what you said?
No.
Okay, what did you say?
I said, Marie, in your motion, that is three years, that is, the repercussions of that means that these people would be done, except for Lee McAllister.
2020, that's correct.
No.
But if you do a four-year.
No, I get it. I'm asking you what you're trying to do. I want to make sure you're asking me to vote on something. I want to make sure I'm voting on what you want me to vote on.
What you're voting on is a three-year appointment.
With these people being held to that three-year appointment, not moving forward.
The moving forward is from today, moving forward.
Right. So, these people would be off?
These people, all except for Lee McAllister.
Okay, thank you.
Is that clear?
Yeah, I just asked you like three times, and it felt like you weren't willing to say yes or no.
Yes, I was.
Marie, there's no sound. So. You're just making a motion yet?
So, my motion, my motion would be this police and fire board appointments before three years. Do you need more than that?
Nope, I think you're second.
Okay, no, that's, I want to make sure.
Nope, okay.
Is there a second? That's what I need in order to do it. So, if there's no second, it's going to die. So, the next motion would be the motion for a four-year.
You got to make it again.
The motion for a four-year appointments, which would reinstate these people, would be my intention.
Yes.
Reinstate.
There's continuing through the end of the year.
Yeah. It would be until December 31st.
I'll second that.
So, all of them will be done in 2023.
And then when we move forward to appoint new people, we could stagger them like you'd like to do?
Four years.
Yeah. Then we'll have the ability to stagger all of them.
We have the ability to stagger with three, but that's okay.
Well, not Lee McAllister.
No, not if we're doing four.
Lee McAllister, he's the first stagger.
All right, but that's not the motion, so the motion's four.
You guys, all right. So, the motion is, your motion was for four years. So, oh, have to vote on my motion first.
No, you didn't get a second.
You have a second, so we go second.
Cheryl's motion was to make the police and fire board number turn appointments four years, and the current appointments continue till December 31st, 2023.
And I second it.
Okay.
Well, Steve, second it, that's fine.
Did you want a second?
Oh, I'll second.
You're going to go and do that one? Okay.
Wait, I want a second.
That's how you thought your job was hard. How would you like me to have one of these jobs?
That's it, just hang on, you're, more than you're. So, what I will do then, as long as, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, ready? Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, Challenger, yes. Ms. Howe?
No.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bless?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so then what I will do, since you made a four-year appointment, then I will bring to you for your acceptance or rejection, Gary Conley's.
Well, you said he was going to quit.
Yes.
Well, then you.
So, they'll take his place.
Oh, you mean the person to take his place, okay.
Right.
Well, you gave us one before, in the last meeting.
We didn't vote on it.
No, I know, but you gave them as a person's name.
I'll, I'll bring them to you, so you'll have.
One was McAllister, and the other was, who?
Four.
Four.
So, they will be brought up next meeting, which will be February 6th, right? Okay. All right, what do we got?
It's 9:01.
Oh, you guys have to decide. Do you want to go on past 9:00? If not, all of this goes on with our next.
We've only got one more, right?
Well, yes.
And he's here.
Yes, well, superintendent reports public statements.
Well, let's.
That's why I said just.
I'd move that we take on one more topic, the 14AA, Big B Coffee special use permit to honor the folks' time that are here today.
You have to put it up, thank you.
You're right.
I'm sorry. The intention not to take it out.
You want to restate it?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler, Challenger, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bless?
Yes.
Mr. Closeer?
I don't know.
That's all I heard, Al.
You will be seconded.
Al, did you?
I think so, Al.
Yes, I will second it.
Okay. Apparently, Al seconded.
Al, yes.
Against my better judgment.
Okay, Miles, don't get me in trouble here. Let's keep it petty.
All right. All right, everyone. Appreciate that. Try to be as brief as possible. So, the development we're looking at tonight is a proposed Big B Coffee on the north side of Saginaw, and what you could consider to be a Myers Outlot. However, Myers will maintain ownership of the land. Big B Coffee will lease the building from Myers and then operate within that structure. This is proposed to be a drive-through-only Big B, so you won't be able to, you know, walk in, sit down, and dine. You'll have to be in your car, get your order, scoot on out. I'd also like to mention that, I'd also like to mention that the Big B applicant did attempt to be here tonight, kind of surveyed the room, and figured we weren't going to make it, and I'll take the hit.
I'll bow with Jason out there.
I'll take the hit, too, as my voice, that I didn't, also didn't believe we would make it. They've been good faith actors through this process, though, and they've been good to work with. The planning department always appreciates that. Some points to bring up about this development, you know, with Myers there, and kind of a tight site in this particular outlot, drainage was a concern. They've worked closely with the Drainage Commission to develop a good plan for that. We feel like we have a good one in place. Standards of conditions will always apply, that all of our kind of applicable agencies will get a crack at the set of construction plans prior to a building permit being issued. So, if they are attempting to deviate from their proposed drainage plan on zoning approval, we catch that during the building phase and then hold them to account. The only kind of conditions that deviated from the norm at the last planning commission was because we have two NDs operating together. We wanted copies of all the shared service and maintenance agreements between Myers and Big B Coffee to ensure that, you know, landscaping will be upkept, and all other township standards will be met. They are also willing to do additional screening above what our minimum standards are. So, when you're in the drive-through and your headlights are kind of pointing out towards Saginaw, they're going to do a series of landscaping changes that will obstruct those headlights from actually hitting cars on Saginaw, so there's no kind of interference with light there. So, we felt like that was nice. Is there any questions about this?
Any questions? You don't count.
Okay.
Go right in, we see it every day.
So I had not seen one of these before. Is there, is there one of these in our area that you can reference?
Yeah, there is. I hate that you're probably on the spot here. I can't.
I'm sorry.
I can, I will email out and blind copy the board and administration.
So I'll admit I'm an avid drinker of Big B Coffee, and I had never seen one of these before. They're very different looking. They're very small, and they're usually on a small lot. And I actually saw one in New Buffalo when I was traveling, and they're basically just a drive-through, and they, they're, they're very modern looking. It's not the same as going in and seeing a barista. It's very different. But I had the opportunity to go through one, and I, I think this is a great use for a lot that probably otherwise wouldn't have found a tenant, I will say. So I think if, if, if you could tell us, maybe in the area where there's one, or send some pictures.
Yeah, I, I can.
They're very different.
There is one in Lansing Township. I forget what road it's on. I agree with what the superintendent said. These structures, it was interesting, when they submitted their site plan approval, they actually submitted a 65-page build, set of building plans, too, because they're prefabbed, already approved, signed and sealed by the state of Michigan. I also agree that they did a very creative layout to use a section of this parcel that I don't think any other land use would be able to use. Benefit, too, the township would also be that, you know, they'll be hooking into our water and sewer system there.
But the taxes will go to Asland?
No, that's Bat Township.
Oh, they'll go to Bat Township?
School, school taxes.
No, no, I mean our school taxes. I'm sorry.
The school taxes don't go to Asland.
There.
Yeah.
Asland went into one of our school districts. We have four Bat Township we should promote.
Mike, I have one quick one. Oh, go ahead.
This is in blue, right?
Yep.
Where does it come off of the side roads? Last time you gave us one, it showed the, the drive-through and everything else.
Yeah, their ingress and egress, and we, I have drawings that I can send out as well, to kind of show you the general layout. But their ingress and egress will be off of the Myers parking lot. Similar, very similar to Taco Bell.
So they'll go around.
Yeah, you enter the Myers.
Where do they go out?
You enter the Myers.
Oh, okay.
It's all in and out of Myers.
You go down into Big B's, just like you go into Myers and go down into Taco Bell.
Okay.
That's a much better street flow from a traffic control perspective.
Right? Comes out with the traffic.
No. Well, yeah, they will.
Yeah, they would have to leave out.
If they want a park or not.
So they either go right, or they cross it and go left, or south.
I do have a question.
Yeah, that, yep, that helps with traffic flow. You don't want too many ingresses and egresses off of a highway. It's never a good thing.
No, that, that was part of the issue, was the traffic flow.
Are we going to put some stop signs so these people, when they come out?
Within the parking lot, yes. There is, that is part of their signage plan.
Okay.
They will have a stop sign coming out. The people in the parking lot will have the right of. Yep, they will have to stop, look left and right as they exit.
There's a lot of traffic that goes down that road, that.
Yep, I agree. That's why they will yield to that traffic.
So it is a yield sign, not a stop sign?
It's a stop sign.
So they have to come to a full stop?
Full stop. Look left and right.
So who cares?
Yeah.
And then it goes, okay, I'm going to go down.
Hi, also, the owner is actually the owner of the Abbott Road Lake Lansing Big B. So they're, they're very near us, but I, I was happy to see a current business owner expanding into our township. So I very much like that as well.
Yeah, it was a really nice thing about this applicant, is they are vocal, and they've made a heavy effort to be locally involved, which is nice.
How are they involved?
They've come to all, they wanted to be at this meeting tonight. They've come to all of our meetings in the past for.
It's not a community kind of thing. It's just for their, for the board.
Yeah, but like, for comparisons to Taco Bell, their office was out of Chicago. They have no idea, you know, Bat Township is, these people do.
They live here, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know if they live in the township, but they're in the area.
In the area, okay. Thank you, Myles. Great, I appreciate you. I think you are done. Like, you can actually go.
Ten minutes, good job.
All right, that was the introduction. So I think we have other public comments. Just give your superintendent a word, because I think that's what you said.
I have a very quick one that I want to thank everybody, Myles, and everybody in the township that chooses to do this job. And for you that chose to sit up here, regardless of agree to disagree, we appreciate the time. And I know, whatever happens in the long run, thanks for what you do. Ms. Bakker just thanked her. Thankless job. You guys at least deserve that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Have a nice evening. First luck to them. Okay, do you want to go with the board member comments?
I have one. I'd like to make, if that's appropriate.
Go right in. Yeah, we'll start with you in the middle.
I've put a lot of thought into this. This is going to be an interesting board comment, folks.
Oh, God, don't start off like that.
This started back in March of 2022, and it's carried along for a year now, for all year long. And I would be remiss if I didn't, I don't feel it would be right to the township. I don't feel it would be right to the people if I didn't say something at this point. I believe our next meeting is February 7th.
Six.
Six.
And you may be stuck with me if something happens, if something doesn't go a certain way.
All right, now that you put it like that.
On December 31st of 2022, our county treasurer of 33 years.
She has a treasure.
Her and I have been talking about this day for, like I said, we usually have a meeting in March when we, when we get done with settlement. And we talked about some things, and I informed her in March that I was figuring on retiring. Earlier this year, I was, my wife and I talked about it, and we took a 10-day vacation. We really thought about it long and hard, and I assumed that I was going to be retiring in September. I was asked to hold out. I've been through a lot of thoughtless days, and a lot of days in the world, didn't know what I wanted to do. I'm very respectful, very thankful for all the respect that everybody in this township has given me. But I am a candidate. I will be picked from on February 1st for the county treasurer's position. Bat Township is the second highest taxable value in Clinton County at $504 million, just behind the Wood Township at $603. We have a lot at stake down here. We don't have a lot of people that come. I'm not making excuses, saying, hey, no, no, there's no lie. It's a good thing. Me, too. That's a good way to finish my career. Somebody, a good friend of mine pointed out that I was in my fourth quarter of life, which I am.
Good gosh.
And I'm, I'm not ready to quit yet. And this job is intriguing. I need the challenge, so I will not reveal where I come from. But this gives you folks a little bit of time to think, to think about what this, you're going to have some decisions to make. I'm more than happy to take and give you compliments and advice and whatnot, and what, what these decisions are going to be, what you, what you can do. If I am appointed, there's a lot of issues here. As you know, February 28th is the last day to collect taxes. There's 28 units that you, in Clinton County, to collect taxes. 16 townships which settled in March 1st, and six cities that settled March 1st. The villages all settle, their, their September settlement date, so you don't have to deal with that. I, I said something today to the clerk and the superintendent, and we talked about that job, but didn't indicate what we're indicating right now, that I get rid of what I was talking about. You've got, you've got to either have a lot of confidence, or you've got to be crazy to take that on. At the, at the time, you're taking it on. However, former treasurer of the ward has did a lot of work with me.
Good lady.
And we've had a lot, we've had a lot of things done and working together, so I'm confident in the job. But that's, that's my intent. My intent is to go into, my paperwork will be there. It's done. Be there this week. And I, that's the last hoop I have to jump through. I've jumped through everything else that I didn't want to let you people know on February 7th, and I didn't want you knowing, hearing about it without hearing it from me. That was important to me, that you hear it from me.
Good question.
So that's my, that's my, my, my issue. That's, I'll be spending some time here at the end of the month with both the county there and going through the process.
What's the process here?
We'll see what happens. Well, actually, this is a great thing for me. I'm elected until 2024, so you can't take me out. On the other side of the coin, it's not so great for me, because I think of what's going to happen here. And we did a little research, myself and somebody else here has done a little research, maybe the clerk. I don't, I don't want to imply too much. But you can't do both, but you can, you can get around that, to finish out the settlement process for, for March 1st. And, and there's a lot you got to do. You got to go through this, this, you go before the judges for the last thing here. And there's a list with job description that is pretty intense, and I can check every box. And so I was amazed.
So what's the process here?
I don't know.
Okay.
Until I, until I'm, until I'm appointed up there, then, then, then after that point in time, then you're going to have to huddle, and I'm hoping that you let me have a play in it, to give you some advice on what, what I think needs to be done. We'll cross that bridge when it comes to it. I'll, I, I hope that you're honest with me. I've been honest with you, and I told you this. I think it's fair, that, that unfair for me not to say what it's.
Well, I guess they won't.
And I've, I've struggled, I've struggled, I've struggled with this thing for, since September.
Well, you should have gotten me, because I already said, don't struggle. There's no reason to struggle.
But that, that's, that's the bottom line. It's, it's time for a new challenge. It's time for some, some good things. It's a good thing for the southern part of the county. It's a good thing for the northern part of the county. There's been one other man from this township that was county treasurer years ago, and his name was Gerald Tucker. He's the only other person from Bat Township that was a county treasurer.
So you've been asking for permission?
Well, I have one. Why would you have to ask me that?
You don't like this one. Just ask you. You're going to ask it.
I, I have one.
Okay, you won't ask it.
I will bring, we will have a process in place, much like when we filled the vacancy after the, I believe it was the 2020 general election. There's a gentleman sitting in this room that was appointed through that process. This board can choose to go through that process again. You'll have a number of days in which you can appoint someone. You'll have to determine what that process looks like, and if you don't appoint someone within that time period, you'll have to hold a special election. So.
I believe you have 45 names.
I believe you're correct.
45.
Yeah. So, but I'll bring that information back to all of you, and certainly we'll know prior to that meeting if it'll be a topic of discussion.
So nobody knew, right?
Well, you had to tell somebody, and not.
That's what I'm saying, nobody knew.
Right, I would want to do something like that, but I, but then it's.
Age has nothing to do with it.
If, if something is good for the county, it's good for the township. It's good for all the little townships in the county. And like I said, this is something that's been chatted with myself and the county director for all year.
If I may. I would echo your statements. I, I would think that there would be no question. I, I think it would be the culmination of your career, and I would be proud for you to represent us in Clinton County.
Well, see, go ahead.
We shall see.
Perhaps the rest of the board should place some calls to those judges, so that we can guarantee Mr. Wisswasser stays here. That's the question.
And that is one thing about this process, I want to say, that that is very scrutinized, that there's absolutely no contact at all at the point where it matters now. And earlier on, there was just contact with, with, with the county treasurer. And people, I guess, that there's absolutely zero contact to the people that's involved.
Everybody else too, though.
At this point in time, there is no other candidate.
Those are some good odds, Steve. I don't want to draw your attention to this, but if it's not you, then.
Well, we'll see what happens, but you know about. And I feel better. I'll sleep better tonight. If I don't get it, I'm going to still hear your calls for a while, as long as I, as long as I can stay in here, Marie.
Oh, God. Do you have to give those words? I just think I can do that.
You're a hard person to set, actually.
Okay, you're a hard person to set. Hard is easy. Hard is easy. All right. I think we're adjourned. Who, any other comments?
I'm over adjourned.
Well.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Butler Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisswasser?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Funes Bless? Mr. Funes.
Oh, sir, yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, he always says no. We are officially adjourned.